Evening. What?
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to the Fairbanks, North Star Borough. Can I call our board to order, please? Can I call our board to order? Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Fairbanks, North Star Borough District Regular School Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the 3rd, and we are starting at 6:00 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Dunedin people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe, supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Will you please join Ms. Hardy in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Colonel Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson?
Present.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mr. Dorn?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the Alaska After School Superhero Award 2023. Jennifer Winkin, the Fairbanks, North Star Borough 21st CCLC After School Program Development Coordinator, was honored by the Alaska After School Network as one of Alaska's 2023 After School Superheroes Awardees. Lindsey Wagner, After School Program Director, Will Weaver, Lindsey Weaver, Will After School Program Director, will make the presentation. If you could please step to the podium?
Can we hear me okay or do I need, does it need to come down? Test?
Better?
Better. Okay. Jennifer sees out-of-school time as the place where youth's futures are shaped and changed for the good. If such a space does not exist, she will create it. Jennifer works closely with 120 certified staff, support staff, and student workers through the 21st CCLC grant-funded after-school programs. Spearheading the school-age program quality process for the Fairbanks, North Star Borough School District, Jennifer provides training, support, resources, time, and opportunities for staff to learn new ways to provide quality after-school programs to students in the interior of Alaska. It's rare that you find a professional who can couple the hard stuff with comedy and grace, but similar to the way that she works with her students in the district and in her performing company, FACT, the Fairbanks Academy of Children's Theatre, Jennifer supports the whole profession by leading team members through the hard situations while respecting the social and emotional needs of the team members and students. For over two decades, Jennifer has proven to be a true asset to our district, the interior, and our state, and I'm proud to announce that she is one of only six of the outstanding after-school professionals who act as after-school superheroes in youth's lives for 2023. Please join me in celebrating the incredible commitment and passion of our youth, 21st CCLC After School Programs Development Coordinator, Jennifer Winkie. I'll hold on to this stuff. You come back, you have a lot of stuff to pick up. Oh.
We want to say thank you again. That 21st Century Grant Program for After School Coordinators has been an ongoing champion for our students and has served our families and our community in an awesome way. We want to thank you for making such a difference. Next, we are going to bypass the ESP of the Month. Due to our road conditions, neither one are here, our presenter or, but I would just like to say that Deb, Deborah Rogers, Star of the North Student Aid, was who we would be recognizing tonight as the ESP of the Month for October 2023, and her head teacher, Lori Willett, would have been making a presentation. So we would just like to thank her for her dedication and the work that she does with our students. Next, we will go to a motion to adopt our consent, this agenda. I need a motion for that.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items by consensus. Second.
I'm reading from my own notes because my computer just decided to update itself. No, it was, thank you. Public comment on reports and non-agenda items. Public comment on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who are signed up in advance through the school board's offices testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling last name, and the city of the residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification, although there's time at the end of each of our meetings for a school board and superintendent comments. Some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately, and additional information may be needed to be gathered. First, for, signed up is Janet Farrell, if you'll come forward? Is by consent, it's like we've been doing it? And if there's no objections, we don't need a vote? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Farrell. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Janet Ferris, F-A-R-R-I-S, and I'm a resident of North Pole. Hello, as I have stated, my name is Janet Ferris. I am the Fort Wainwright School Liaison Officer and a member of the Alaska Purple Star School Designation Advisory Board. I would like to remind the school district and the borough that the application window to apply for the Purple Star School Designation Award is open. Applications will be accepted until December 31st. All public schools, including charter schools, home schools, private schools, and post-secondary schools in Alaska, may apply for this outstanding recognition. Even if your school only has one military-connected student, your school qualifies. The Purple Star School Award is in recognition of military-friendly schools that show major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. At this time, 11 Fairbanks, North Star Borough School District schools have been recognized for this honor. I am hoping the schools who have not applied for the Purple Star School Recognition Award will apply this year. The application may be found at education.alaska.gov/purplestaraward, or feel free to contact Ernest Kincaid, Ison Air Force Base, Sloan, Georgia Sangren, the School District Military Connected Coordinator, or me. This year's award ceremony will be in the Fairbanks, North Star Borough area. Let's have a great representation of schools to be honored at this ceremony in April. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ferris, for that presentation. Can you tell us, does the school principal or someone in administration, who applies for that award?
Well, that's the great thing about it. It's a team effort, so it's the entire school staff and the youth who are involved in it to apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Ms. Marotti. Mr. Dorn?
Just again, could you give us the due date for those?
December 31st.
Thank you.
And the great thing is, schools who haven't applied and you're wondering if you need help, you have three of the board members in your area. Hint, hint.
Thank you. I think the next is our, is there anybody else who has any testimony that would like to come forth at this time on non-agenda items? Seeing that part of testimony is closed, and I don't believe Mr. Cash is here from the Borough Assembly, so we won't have that report, which leads into my report, short and sweet. I was able to go with Ms. Burnett to the North Star College campus and visit and to observe our, two of our cohorts of students, I think in one room was maybe 80 kids or more, maybe more than that because it was a huge room, but it was really cool to observe their interactions and just to see where they are able to meet and learn was pretty exciting. And the office where the students can receive help or pick up snacks or any kind of information or just to come and, you know, hang out, it was really neat to talk to them and the coordinator, who's doing great work there. So I really appreciate that program, and it was a joy to go and visit. Second, as though we didn't have our ESP and their presenter here tonight because of the roads, I'd like to talk about the school safety. You know, now the snow is up on us, I have to come through North Pole, Ms. Smith, and we get to come through the construction and people's driving and the big trucks, and it's interesting. So I love early, so I get her, and I really want to caution and thank our community. As you see our buses, please take the time to stop and make sure that those little ones are safe, that they get to school safely. It's really important, and we just need to slow down, take that little extra minute or leave earlier so that you don't feel that pressure. And when those lights are flashing, no matter what, you have to look around, you have to be really observant. I found myself in a kind of interesting situation, so just want to put that out there for our children and for the community and, you know, let's just be mindful. And the only thing that I'm adding to the end of my report is that more visits are scheduled as time allows to see all the awesome and great things that our district, our staff, and our students are participating in. With that, I will go to Dr. Marner, and he will give us his report from the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sanderson. I'm going to start this evening just saying how deeply saddened I was hearing about the tragic military accident that claimed the lives of two of our Fort Wainwright soldiers and left several others injured. My thoughts and prayers go out to the families and loved ones of those who lost their lives, and I extend my heartfelt condolences to them during this difficult time. The dedication and sacrifice of our military personnel cannot be overstated, and we are grateful for their unwavering commitment to protecting our nation and being a part of our community. On the night that we have a resolution honoring Veterans Day, it's a heartbreaking reminder of the risks our military personnel face in the line of duty to protect the freedoms we all enjoy every day. To those that were left injured in the accident, I offer my sincere wishes for a swift recovery. And Colonel Cole, if there's anything we can do to help support you from the school district, we offer our support and we're happy to help in any way that we can. Continue my thoughts. I do want to change the atmosphere a little bit and just say a huge congratulations to Steven Ratsloff. He is a building trades teacher at Hutchinson High School, and many of us had a chance to recognize his achievement this morning at Hutchinson High School. He was one of 25 winners in the whole United States for a Harbor Freight Tools Teaching in Excellence Award, so huge honor for him. Very first Alaskan to ever receive this award. He, the award came with $50,000. $35,000 goes to Hutchinson High School, $15,000 directly to him, and they also shipped up a huge tool case, which I think he might be the most excited about. And I was too, I was like, can I see the tools? So just a great honor and just another showcase of the amazing things that are happening in our district and specifically at Hutchinson High School. I do have some positive news regarding our transportation. The last meeting I talked that we were struggling with drivers, I'm happy to announce that we've had some additional drivers come out of the training pipeline, which has helped stabilize some of our routes. So we anticipate additional drivers coming out of that pipeline in the next couple of weeks, which means that we should not see the last-minute cancellations that we were experiencing a couple of weeks ago. So that's really good news for the service for our families and our students. Our students and teachers have just finished up their fall rounds of assessments and screeners. Our educators had the opportunity to do a deep dive with school-level data last Thursday on their early release and then all of Friday. And based on those data, they are putting action plans into place to help increase student achievement, specifically on literacy, planning the interventions that they will have on a school-wide basis, planning their RAP plans and communications with our families. I do want to say a huge family, huge thank you to our educators who are working through a lot of new steps related with the Alaska REEDS Act this year. I know they're going above and beyond, not only just to do their job every day, but to put those interventions in place and the supports for our students. So huge thank you to all of our educators that are doing that. Very pleased to announce that we received two huge grants this last week, one from the United States Department of Justice in the amount of $696,071. That's a three-year grant, and that grant is specifically focused on school safety and climate. That will help provide and maintain school safety assistant levels at three of our high schools, so three FTEs for those high schools for three years. It will also provide some additional training for risk assessments at our secondary schools, which will be something that we'll work on and have training for and implement in the years to come. Additionally, the second grant is for $2 million. It's a DODIA Military Connected Local Education Agencies for Academic and Support Programs. It's a very exciting grant, five-year grant, $2 million that'll provide additional tutors at our school to help with literacy for our military-connected students. So great opportunity there. I'd like to recognize four donors this evening in the 1,000 to 5,000 range. Midnight Sun PTA, Barnett Magnet PTA, Epic Lawn Care Pulse, and Laborers Local 942. Thank you very much to our community partners for helping our schools and providing additional opportunities for our students. I'd like to remind everybody that the Alaska Association of Student Governments has their fall conference this next week, and it will be hosted at West Valley High School. And so if you haven't ever seen an ASOG conference, it's one of the most amazing things, seeing our students in action, participating in a civic process, and having actionable debate over resolutions that impact their lives. And so I know I'm excited to see it. A ton of effort has gone into planning that event, and it's going to be a great one held at West Valley High School here on October 13th through the 15th. And then lastly, a reminder of the College and Career Fair that's coming up for our juniors and seniors, held in conjunction with UAF. This is something that had been placed on hold due to COVID, and it's coming back to our community. So a huge thanks to UAF for partnering with us, and a big thanks to the teaching and learning team for putting that on for our juniors and seniors, as it's a great opportunity for them to interact with over 40 vendors that'll be at that event. So that concludes my report for this evening, and happy to answer any questions from the board.
Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. Just one quick question. What time is the ASOG conference?
I believe it kicks off 6:00 PM on Friday night, and then it'll go all day Saturday.
So if we want, are board members allowed to attend?
Yes, they are.
What time on Saturday? Or can you let me know what time on Saturday?
We can send you a schedule. I believe it's eight or nine in the morning, and then it'll go all day.
That'd be amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you for that report, Dr. Marner, and all the positive things in it. Just a quick question on the buses. Is it still too early to see whether we might be looking at being able to add in some routes? Glad we're stabilizing, but want to get.
I had anticipated you were going to ask that question this evening. I think it is too early to say that we would be increasing, given the last time I was worried about, the last time we were, I was in front of you, I was worried about decreasing routes. So right now, I would say we're stabilized. Of course, we want to increase those routes when we feel like we have a good opportunity to do so, and we definitely are looking at that, but maybe a little too early to say that we're going in that direction.
Thank you.
Were there any additional questions for, okay. Thank you, Dr. Marner, for your report. We have no action items of unfinished business, which moves us to our new business. We have Resolution 2024-07, Support for Lights On After School. The 21st Community Learning Centers After School Program has been celebrating Lights On with the communities across the nation for over 20 years. Lights On After School is a national and local celebration of after-school programs on October 26, 2023, that promotes the critical importance of quality after-school and summer learning programs in the lives of our children, their families, and community. This event is sponsored by the After School Alliance and draws attention to the programs available, as well as the need for more programs. This resolution calls on leaders of the district and the community to build awareness of the need for students to have access to a safe, friendly place at school where lights, where the lights are both on after-school and during the summer to support Lights On After School. And Ms. Hardy, would you please read that resolution for us?
Do you want the motion first? Move to approve Resolution 2024-07, Support for Lights On After School. Second.
Thank you. And then if you could read it.
Whereas, the members of the Fairbanks, North Star Borough Board of Education stand firmly committed to the school district's 21st Century Community Learning Centers' quality after-school and summer learning programs, because these programs are key in assisting our students become successful adults by providing a safe, challenging, and engaging learning experience for our students to develop their social, emotional, physical, critical thinking, and academic skills. Developing skills for academic and personal improvement and success among our youth, supporting working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, supporting families in becoming more effective partners in their children's education, and building stronger communities by involving students, families, business leaders, community organizations, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults. And whereas, our 21st Century Learning Programs have provided significant leadership in the areas of community involvement, in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key in helping our children become successful adults. And whereas, Lights On After School are a national celebration of after-school programs on October 20th, 2022, that promote a critical importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of our children, their families, and our communities. And whereas, after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are forced to close their doors. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Fairbanks, North Star Borough Board of Education enthusiastically supports Lights On After School and commits to support innovative after-school and summer programs that will help close the achievement gap and prepare children for their future by ensuring programming is delivered to the 21st CCLC grant-funded sites where the lights stay on and the doors stay open for students after school. And be it further resolved, the Fairbanks, North Star Borough Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 26, 2023, as Lights On After School Day in the Fairbanks, North Star Borough School District, and calls on the leaders of the school district and the Fairbanks, North Star Borough to bring awareness to the need for the students to have access to a safe, friendly place where the lights are on after school and during the summer, and to support 21st Century Community Learning Centers' after-school programs.
Is there anyone in the community that would like to come forward to testify on this resolution? Is there anyone from the board that would like to have any? Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. I just want to comment and thank, we have a good representation across the back of the room of members involved with the after-school program that make it possible and in our schools. And as you mentioned, there are lots of staff who are helping to teach kids, work with them with a variety of programs, academic and enrichment types of programs. One thing I really want to thank the district for in terms of participating for quite a number of years now in the 21st Century After School Program is the consistency it has brought for quite a number of our schools. And the other thing that, which is the services then to those students and their families that is really important, especially as sometimes within our community agencies that would try to do that, they were not able to maintain that, so this is a very important program. But the other thing that I was noticing on it is that it provides a model for a number of our other schools that have either not been able to be part of the large grant program or were for a little while, but because of qualifications, were not able to continue under this umbrella, but have continued to provide some after-school programs. So I think kudos to our after-school directors and staff members in helping all schools actually within our district that want to participate.
Ms. Hardy, then Ms. Burnett?
I want to echo my support, looking back at Billy Smith, who roped me into teaching in the after-school program at Hunter. Seems like a million years ago, but not that long. I know firsthand as a classroom teacher and as someone who taught in the after-school program how important this is to the children in our community, and I'm so glad that we continue to offer it. continue to offer it.
Ms. Burnett?
I'd also like to echo my support. Many, many, many years ago, when my first son, who went to Hunter Elementary, Mr. Smith, was one of the greatest at helping my son just enjoy school and everything about it. So, I am proud to support this and think it's amazing, and thank you for these, and we will wear them proudly.
Ms. Marotti?
Not going to not get on this. Support Enjoy Bandwagon. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to everyone that is a part of our after-school programs. This is an equity supporter in our school system, and that is huge, and we appreciate you.
Not to beat a dead horse, but... So, here's why I think this program is so important. Years ago, in a community school, parents didn't trust the school, they didn't interact with the school, they didn't feel heard at the school. When the 21st Century Learning Grant came, and Mr. Smith was assigned to that school, the engagements of parents in the community and their trust and communication and their support of their student changed overwhelmingly. This past couple of weeks, I was not able to help out with his annual dinner, but I did reap some benefits of some really yummy greens, so, just saying. But it's an awesome opportunity. Huge family members come, they have a great time of having a meal, something that the students grew, the vegetables, and it's an awesome opportunity where you see the staff have met a need for students, the community can see that need being met, and there's a camaraderie and a real supportive scaffolding system that's built under our students. So, I really appreciate all the work in the summertime that, over at Ryan, what is produced there. It is amazing, and it is so beneficial to our students, and I'm so supportive that and happy that we have this program. So, with that, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Resolution 2024-08, Honoring Veterans Day. Resolution 2024-08 recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, great speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and the community. Ms. Marotti, would you please?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-08, Honoring Veterans Day.
Second.
Yes, we do need a motion and a second. Ms. Marotti, would you please read the resolution?
Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2024-0, Honoring Veterans Day. Whereas, the United States of America was founded on principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas, America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas, serving as educators, support staff, board members, parents, and in other important capacities, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serves as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots whose courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe. And whereas, as we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices, now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community members, community partners, to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community.
Thank you. Is there any comment on this resolution? Is there any board comments? Yes, Ms. Marotti?
As a veteran and in honor of Ms. Matheson, who is also a veteran, I appreciate and throw my whole support behind this resolution, and also in honor of our two military representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn.
I'm very glad to support this, and particularly mindful of when I was a principal, the times that parents or relatives came into classrooms, especially after they had been maybe deployed for a while for one reason or another, and then they were able to return and come in and just spend some time in the classroom, and their presence was very positive, not only for their own children, but for the other students who were there and for our staff. And I think this is one of those reminders of why having people from our community come in, talk to kids, to share, and just sometimes hanging around, having that lunch or whatever. So, we really appreciate those veterans and those military service who, men and women who are, do come to our schools, and some that I know are volunteering in our schools, and some just coming to say hi to their kid, but they say hi to all the kids. So, appreciate that.
Ms. Burnett?
I'm also proud to support this in honor of all of our veterans, anybody and everyone who has served in honor of Ms. Matheson, our representatives from the military bases, and as the granddaughter of a World War II and Vietnam veteran, this makes me proud, and I am honored to support it. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes, fully support it.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of, to amend, the 2023-2024 Borealis Sun Charter School Contract. Included in the agenda is the proposed FY 2023-2024 contract, page 11, from the Borealis Sun Charter School. Approval of amendment memorandum and approval to change, changes of the contract, the administration recommends the charter school memorandum presented for this school year be approved.
Move to approve, to approve, oh, I put the wrong one. Sorry, somebody else take it.
Move to approve the amendment to the 2023-2024 Charter School Contract, approval of the current enrollment by grades, and approval to changes of the contract between the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District and Borealis Sun Charter School Incorporated.
Second.
Okay. This is for Superintendent Marnock. Is there someone coming to talk about this?
Yeah, I believe Principal Foshee is coming up to the...
I know, I saw you out there.
...in the stand. I will open that and just provide a little context as to the ask to the board, and hopefully simplify what we're looking at tonight. So, Borealis Sun is requesting some flexibility in their class-size numbers, which also relates to the PTR in their school. They're not looking to increase the overall enrollment for their school. We bring this to the board because both of those things are expressly stated within the contract, and so, any contractual items we bring before the board for this amendment. So, if I can, I'll turn it over to Principal Foshee to add any additional information.
Go ahead, Ms. Foshee, and thank you. You can get closer. Is it on?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you to Mrs. Zakowski for joining me tonight. She's our APC Chair. So, in order to meet our enrollment number of 195, we're just about six students short of that number. So, we'd like to add two more students to kindergarten, two more students to first grade, and two more students to second grade, because we do have a waiting list in those grades, and that would meet our enrollment requirement of 195 students.
Any further information? That's it? Is there any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Matheson, then Mr. Dorn.
Hi, Mrs. Foshee. Thank you so much for coming in today. We requested for additional funding from our borough in order to keep our classroom sizes down, and having 24 kindergarteners, 26 first graders, 26 second graders, and 27 fourth graders, how are you going to mitigate making sure that they're all learning?
So, I think those numbers are well under the numbers for the district at this time. You can check me if I'm wrong, but I think those are under the numbers for most of the...
Yeah, so, the elementary said at 25, but a reminder to the school board that that's not a hard cap for class sizes. That just means the staffing level. So, there are several classes specifically at the higher end that are in the 27 to 28 range. So, that falls perfectly within other home attendance area schools as far as class sizes.
Who else? Was it Mr. Dorn who had the next question? Go ahead, Ms. Dorn.
Thank you for coming tonight. So, I've got a couple. So, I think you may have answered one of my questions in terms of, this will just bring you to 195.
That's great.
Okay. But my question is, next year, you're hoping to have a full?
Yes.
Eighth grade?
Yes.
How does this impact the incoming kindergartens? What is your projection at this point, since right now you have no eighth graders, you have one grade level less?
Yes. We have one grade level less, and Mrs. Zakowski is the seventh-grade teacher. So, she's looking forward to taking her 22 seventh graders up to eighth grade next year, and then we'll hold our lottery like we usually do in the spring. And last year, we had one of the largest, I would say, reactions to that, and had a significant amount of people that decided to come to our lottery and orientation, and we had pretty robust numbers. So, our kindergarten is one of those classes that always fills up fast, and we usually have a very long waitlist. So, when I say long, probably about 12 to 14 for our school.
Follow-up. You can, Mr. Dorn.
Okay. So, that brings forward my concern that next year, ostensibly, you'll have 22 in the eighth grade. If you have a very high retention-return rate, you'll be at the 195. So, when you bring kindergarteners in, if you're looking at the 22-24 range, that's going to pull you well over the 195. So, what's the planning?
So, next year, when we are, well, at the, next spring, when we come and present our report, our numbers will be different for the 2024-2025 school year. They won't be at 195. We will have added in 22 more students for our eighth grade to allow for that.
Ms. Hardy, did you have clarification?
Yeah, and it was, I saw where it was going. The charter school original was at 212.
Right.
And so, we had to move it down when we lost the eighth grade and couldn't staff it and afford to have a full-time teacher for so few students. So, 195 is simply for this year, and it was what we gave to Mr. DeBra.
Correct? Yes, correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Who else had a question? All right. Did you have a final question, Ms. Dorn?
I have other questions.
Yep.
So, put me back in the key and...
You're it. You're up.
Okay. And if you had any mid-year evaluation or applications, you're not anticipating taking any additional students unless somebody leaves, is that correct?
If we have applications in the, in the classrooms where we still aren't meeting our enrollment number, then yes. And yes, we have had some applications, and we just did some tours this last week, and they chose to join our school. They apply through the lottery system.
Right. But so, they...
What is your question, Ms. Dorn?
I'm trying to figure out how, what's the planning in this and what's the ripple effects of this. I am not necessarily against this proposal, and I think it meets a need right now, but I'm trying to figure out how the numbers work. And I guess my major concern is that this is a one-time Band-Aid that you're becoming, you anticipate coming back to us next year to change the contract again, to reflect whole different numbers.
Right. Every year, charter schools are tasked with coming to the board with their annual contract. So, every year, we would come and bring our numbers to the board if that's fluctuated or changed in any way. So, this year is kind of an anomaly. We didn't have that eighth-grade class, and next year, we will have an eighth-grade class.
And you're anticipating going to 217 or so next year, 212?
To be determined.
And if I might have a question to the, I think it's more appropriate to the administration.
Go ahead, Ms. Dorn.
This is very short, this is a short-term fix, sort of a Band-Aid situation. We have a board has, have talked about possibly having multi-year contracts instead of every year. But my concern is that every time there's a shift in a number, perhaps even one student or two at a grade level, that this has to come back. Is there something that might be considered where we can use more broad language that would give the charter schools some latitude within a range? I mean, very much like, yes, we have a target. I know, so, let me just go to that question, and I can do a follow-up.
Yeah, I think it's a good question and one that we'll need to dig into a bit more. Within their charter specifically, it is a requirement that they list their class sizes, their target class sizes in their PTR within the charter itself. We've taken that information and also baked that into the yearly contract with the school district. So, I'm not sure legally, if we don't have that in the contract and we go to, you know, a three- or a five-year contract, whether or not the charters would have to come back to seek an amendment if those numbers are outside of what their charter, like, has said it is. My thinking on the spot is, yes, that they would need to come back every time that it went outside of the specifics in the charter, and that is specifically outlined in state statute, that that's a requirement of their charter application. But can certainly do more research on that as prior to the contract season with charter schools. And I would say I'm definitely supportive of multi-year agreements with charters, but that lies with the board in that, in that decision.
Do you have a follow-up?
I have a question for...
One more.
Okay. So, I'm also interested then in terms of, I'm trying to get a handle on the numbers piece, because some of these is just one student. One of the things that charter schools have been, and this was alluded to earlier, has been to have smaller classes, class sizes. That's been one of the attractiveness. This is moving well out of that. This is moving well out of that. Do your perspective, anticipation, you know, not just doing this as one time because it sets a precedent, or perhaps might, where this goes, how often this might come, oh, well, we want to put one more student in. We have this family really would be, or whatever. But I'm concerned about how we bounce back and forth, how many times.
So, can I share with you some things that the charter school is considering doing in order to bolster our enrollment permanently? And that may help. So, pre-COVID, we had an after-school program. And we've all heard all the wonderful things that an after-school program can provide for a school. So, we are pursuing that this year. In order to provide an after-school program, we've lost students due to not having that program. This year, the Girls and Boys Club also has had trouble getting a driver for their bus. They pick up at our school, and they pick up a significant number of students. Our families have done a great job of sharing and carpooling. And our own board member has volunteered to take students over to the Boys and Girls Club if that's needed. We've done a lot of things in order to provide our students with after-school pickup. Other things that we'd like to do are to partner with our military families. We've had a huge influx of military families in our school this year. So, we'd like to partner with Georgia Sangrin and then also with Mrs. Ferris and coordinate with them in order to make sure that we have a really robust welcome packet for families that goes out to our military liaison so they can pass those along. And then, we were also discussing attending the homeschool fairs in town so that we can recruit families that may be considering sending to their children to a brick-and-mortar high school. And coming in, in our middle school grades would be a step in the right direction. For our website, we'd also like to put testimonials from our graduates on there. We have several families that have expressed how much Boreal Sun has meant to them and their wonderful experiences they've had and how that has supported them through high school. So, we'd like to share that on our website as well. So, those are just a few things that we've been thinking about that can help with our overall enrollment.
Can I have a question from Ms. Barnett?
Thank you, Ms. Foshee. First off, thank you for everything you're doing. That's really amazing. It truly is. I really like all the things you guys have going on over there at Boreal's. My question is, so the 195, that's what you're trying to get up to. So, you're asking to increase the class sizes in the lower grades. But will this leave a little bit of wiggle room in that fifth, sixth, seventh area? Like, if you did get, say, like, a December enrollment, you could still add them with no problem without having to come back?
Yes, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doran?
And to the administration, clarification, if I understand correctly, that right now, they're capped at 195 for total enrollment. Is that correct?
That's our target enrollment.
Do you know what's in their charter, Ms. Beam? 212? 195 is in their contract.
195 is in their contract. So, they have to stay. They cannot exceed that.
That would be their cap for this year if that's what's in their contract.
Thank you.
Ms. Matheson?
I think I'm a little confused. You would be under the 195, correct?
Yes, we would. Even if we added the 2 and K, 2 and 1, and 2 and second grade, we're going to still be under the cap unless we were to get a fifth grader or a sixth grader, seventh grader.
And... Because we do have... Within the limits of the PTR?
Yes.
So, I don't understand why this would be an issue?
Dr. Murner, if you could give some clarification on that?
It is kind of confusing. It's a bit of semantics. Charters have a contract with the school district, and then that contract, the yearly contract, that specifically says what the class sizes are and what the PTR is for each individual grade level. And given that it is expressly written in the contract, charters need to come back if they're going to go outside of those student numbers in each individual grade level. And that's what Boreal Sun is doing today. Not asking to increase the overall enrollment for this year, but increasing the number of students in each individual grade level as per the contract with the district.
Follow-up, Ms. Matheson?
No, I just would like to call the question.
Point of order needs to go to the public and then come back to the board, and I would have a comment.
Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to testify on this or have a question for Ms. Foshee? Seeing none, back to the board. Mr. Doran, then Ms. Hardy.
I will support this, but I would, through the chair, respectfully ask that the administration really look at this issue and how it might be addressed in a broader way and what implications there might be for other charter schools so that we're not faced with multiple requests potentially coming back to the board to say, oh, well, we want to go to 23 instead of, could we go 24 students? I mean, but I think there, you mentioned taking some time to research. We have time to do that. But I would ask that we definitely do it through the chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Hardy, did you have any follow-up or clarification?
Just that as a mom of a current second grader at Boreal Sun, who has been in that class with Ms. Snell, I support this. I know that that classroom is so well-run, and I can say that about all the other classrooms and that this decision was not made lightly.
All right, Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote? Seeing any new information or any new comments? Thank you. Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. All right, thank you. I believe next on our agenda is our reports and information. Ms. Foshee, thank you so much for your presentation and information with us. Policy 1061, Student Welfare, School Wellness. Policy 1061, School Welfare, Student Welfare, School Wellness is proposed to be revised and is before the board for a report by the administration. Who's presenting?
Amy, if you can just give a general overview of the proposed policy change and the reason for the change? Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Russ.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little unaware. It's been a crazy, busy day. So, thank you for taking a few moments. There was a National School Lunch program review conducted in February of 2023. I think you guys are all very aware of that. And as a result of one of the corrective actions, they required a change to our district wellness policy. We were not addressing marketing of food and beverages to our students during the federally-defined school day. And so, the bolded and underlined section of the wellness policy just adds that required verbiage so that we're compliant with the federal regulations.
And just for clarification, it just brings this bolded information, brings this policy into compliance.
Correct.
We have a question. Mr. Lopez?
How does this affect student clubs and organizations promoting or making flyers for certain events that sell food or candy? Does this prohibit their right to do so? For example, as a student council, we sell candy canes for the holiday season. Would promoting this event through flyers, posters, et cetera, be against the district's new issuing?
It's currently against the district's wellness policy.
So, if we were to be able to, like, so we couldn't do that?
So, during the defined school day, which the federal government defines as beginning at midnight and concluding 30 minutes after the school's final bell has rung, any food, beverage, candy, any items for sale to students directly are supposed to be compliant with the federal smart snack regulations that are within the National School Lunch regulations. What this verbiage directly impacts is flyers who state Pepsi for sale. You can say beverages for sale, and that's compliant. Candy canes for sale versus food for sale. So, it is, to a certain degree, semantics.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith? Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. The policy committee spent an inordinate amount of time with this policy and asked every question known to man about this policy. So, we did come to the conclusion that there's nothing to be done about the reality of the policy. It is true. You cannot advertise selling Italian sodas, candy canes, chocolate hearts for Valentine's Day being delivered. All of the things that go on during the school day are federally prohibited. So, you can't put up the posters that say, "Chocolate for Valentine's will be delivered to your sweetheart." It's not allowed. I mean, we read the whole smart snack nutrition standards. They have a really cool website where you can type in the nutrition label from any food and see if it's a smart snack, and like, nothing is. So, it's tough, but it's required by law that this language is in our policy. So, we're either part of the federal school lunch program or we're not.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Hardy?
So, back to that semantics question. If we say bake sale, is that okay to put on a poster? Or no?
The language that you choose to use when you advertise food or beverage sales should be as general as possible.
Ms. Burnett?
I'm just going to say I think this is ridiculous, and I highly encourage any schools and teachers out there to be as general as possible with this. Sorry.
Mr. Doran?
You as well. Thank you. Good to see you. I've got a couple of questions on implementation, so I don't know whether to be to you or to the superintendent. So, from 30 minutes after school until midnight, anything can be done?
Correct.
What I, in terms of its implementation, I'm looking, thinking of sponsor banners. Talks about equipment. We make coolers. Some of our coolers may be donated, or they were bought, and they have a logo on them, something like that. Especially if there are sponsor banners that are in the gym or around a field. Do they have to be covered during the daytime and then can be uncovered in the evening? What's the plan?
Well, all I can speak for is the coolers that we have in our Nutrition Services Department. We have begun the discussion about how we will go about reskining them, possibly working with Odom. And if that's not a viable option with them, then we're going to have to find some way to create posters or something like that. And Odom's a great example. You know, they use the Coca-Cola logo a lot. Can they use the Dasani logo instead? Can they use the Minute Maid logo instead? You know, juices, waters, those types of things are smart snack-approved.
So, how about the banners? And I really don't know how many we have that would have a logo on them that...
I think there's less than there used to be. I don't know the exact number either. So, if this policy passed, or it's looking like it's going to pass, we'll start taking inventory of those and coming up with an action plan to meet the requirements of this policy.
Head, Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Doran.
Just for... For clarif...
Ms. Hardy?
For clarification, this was recommended to us from that audit, as in, you need to do this.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mrs. Smith, Ms. Marotti, Mr. Doran?
Thank you, yes. When you really look at the smart snack things, which we did in the policy committee, and trust me, the policy committee didn't like the policy. But just like some other policies, it's required. So, we're trapped that we have to have this policy. But I, Ms. Roush, if you could help me remember, I thought that the vending machines themselves were okay as long as they were not on... Like, there's some really specific stuff that's in the smart snack stuff. Like, that you don't have to take all your stuff out tomorrow if you make this your policy. Just kind of like we were saying, when we get a new poster, when we get a new thing, we want to be more cognizant of it. It wasn't sort of trying to cause us to have to dump all our vending machines out of our school. What we were required to do was add in the policy and now to sort of incrementally come into compliance with the policy. But we did talk about the banners, and gosh, this was a long time ago. So, it was way in the spring, in like, March. So, I'm struggling for it, but it was sort of all the questions and all the pushback was there because we have elementary school principals who were like, our life is over because the bake sales, this is how we make money. And technically, we're technically, by smart snack standards, you are not allowed to sell a brownie unless you put it into the smart snack, the recipe or the nutrition label, and it says that it's smart snacks. So, it has to have its first ingredient, has to be a whole grain. It can't have more grams of sugar than whatever the smart snacks say. I mean, it basically eliminates everything during the school day, everything. So, we really looked at it and hashed it out, but the federal government says that is their goal. They don't want kids to eat candy canes and brownies at school. And so, this is what happens when we let the federal government take over our schools.
Ms. Hardy, did you have a closing comment or nothing? Okay. Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. I'd like to clarify that we're not letting the federal government take over our school. This is a grant that the district receives, and it helps our nutrition program. I work with a couple of organizations that participate in the same federal funding for nutrition that we're talking about tonight. And I can attest that they are very strict on what they expect from the people that receive the funds. They do audits, the orgs that I work with, they do audits annually. And they do that to ensure that the recipients are in compliance. So, if this is a corrective action, that means that if it's not corrected, then it could be a finding next time, and that means we could risk losing our funding. And that would be catastrophic to our nutrition program, to our district in general. So, my question is, will this be coming back to the board on a change, for the change to vote later?
Dr. Murner?
If I understand your question correctly, this is a report, and so, the next meeting, it'll come as a first reading.
Mr. Doran?
So, we do have two more shots at this for first and second reading eventually. So we do have two more shots at this for first and second reading eventually. I find this interesting because actually, I was involved with when this was adopted. And I know at that time, a lot of us as principals said, oh my goodness gracious. And why I look at the implementation pieces as we come along is that there are some flexibilities, not ignoring what's there and what the expectations are and awarenesses. And we made it, yeah, we used to just unplug the vending machines during school hours, depending upon what the vending machine dispersed. So, you know, I think it's just, it's a matter of working through these. And one of my questions is that, I guess, on the vending machine thing, because we used to just turn them off, and that was acceptable, is that still acceptable, or do we have to cover them?
So the unique thing about vending machines is that when the U.S. Department of Agriculture created and instituted the smart snack regulations, they also actually eliminated the need to have those machines off during the school day, as long as they contained smart snack-approved products. So as long as those vending machines are dispensing those items, there's no need to do anything as far as what we used to do. As far as, you know, what I was talking about earlier, about covering the Coca-Cola logo on our coolers in our serving areas and things like that, that, I think, is more what they're looking for. I know a lot of the vending machines, thinking about the high schools, a lot of them don't necessarily have that anymore. The soda beverage companies have, they've been working with us for a lot of years, ever since, you know, USDA started requiring a wellness policy.
And another question, which was always one of the ones that came up first time, this came before us in 2006 and such. So is there anything in this, since it's marketing and advertising, selling things, but if a parent brings in cupcakes or something of that sort, this is not in any way prohibiting parents, restricting parents on what they might bring into school for their child's birthday or for a certain activity? It's not being advertised, it's not being marketed, it's not being sold. Am I correct?
So the federal regulations do not require any compliance if the food or beverage is given to students? So that is parents, that is culinary arts classes who dispense, you know, any of their creations free of charge, any of those types of non-monetary exchanges are exempt. I know that we have included most of the smart snack regulation information as part of an AR with the wellness policy, and that's available for everyone.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
Related to that is if a student brings in something that they purchased outside of school, they bring it into school, it has nothing to do with that?
Absolutely not.
And I have one more question, when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a thought of ripple effect regarding on field trips or student activity trips, they may be traveling during the day, equipment they may be carrying with them, is that anything that we need to be concerned about or trying to figure out how this would be implemented?
My personal opinion would be no, but I will refer to Dr. Murnett.
That's something that we definitely need to research, I don't have a answer for you right at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to vote on this? No. Oh, it's just informational. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roush, for your information and presentation to the board.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
Up next, we have the FYI 25 budget. No, it's just FYI 25 budget update report. Chief Officer, Operating Officer Andrew McGraw will present a budget update and report. Take it away, Mr. DeGraw.
All right, thank you, President Sanderson. This, my, the document showing on the screen should mirror the, I think you have this in your packets, each board member, so I'll just, I'll just run through the illustration and then entertain questions afterwards. So this is our preliminary FYI 25 budget. It is as of about September 20th, maybe a little bit after that. Obviously, needless to say, we're very early in the budget cycle and kind of the first inning of a baseball game or first couple minutes of a football game, so to speak, and so countless things can change over a several month period of time to impact these numbers. So our estimated deficit, I broke it into two parts, this for FYI 25, one including one-time state funding, if that were to be replicated and carried over to FYI 25, from '24 to '25, and then another number excluding that one-time state funding. So the range, 19 to 23 million, approximately $8.1 million was the one-time funding that we received from the state for the current year. And then so without that money, we're looking at a $27 to $31 million deficit for the upcoming budget year. Several factors and assumptions go into coming up with this number. One of the big ones is our projected enrollment that we'll establish. So we're starting the FYI, the current year, 20-day count, it just started actually yesterday. We're trending right around 12,500. And so that's a very preliminary number of what we might be looking at for our projection for the next year. So we have about a week after the 20-day count period is over with that we have to come up with our projection, tongue-in-cheek term is a guess. But, you know, we work with Dr. Ott and apply some formulas and trends to come up with that figure. So that's a preliminary number on what we'll be looking at for FYI, for the FYI 25 school year. Assuming that number, state foundation, assuming all things stay equal, would be a drop of about $1.8 million in state foundation funding. There, on line 10, we're assuming, at least in the top-line estimate at the top, we're assuming the 8.1 million. And then status quo on local and federal revenue, both. So that'd be a local contribution of 54 million, and then impact date of approximately, give or take, about $12 million on impact date. Careers funds will be fully exhausted at the end of FYI '24, so no careers funds will be available for FYI '25. And then increasing expenditures, this again is a rough number, the main items here, increased labor costs, and then utilities and insurance costs have gone up significantly as well. And then assessed valuations, that's another item that can impact our state revenue significantly. Unknown at this time. We should have that, that report here in the next couple of months, and we'll know that. So increasing assessed values is inverse effect on our state foundation funding. I put, I have some kind of benchmarks or measuring sticks for the BSA, what certain levels of a BSA increase would mean as far as revenue to the school district. Basically, we need about $1,150, $1,200 increase in the BSA to overcome that $27 million deficit on the, at the top. $750 would equal about 18 million, and then a $500 increase is about 12 million. So the 8.1 is about $350 increase to the BSA roughly. So that concludes my report.
We have a question for Ms. Matheson and Ms. Marotti.
Hey, Mr. DeGraw. For the listening public, can you tell us what the BSA is right now and why it's so important for us to increase our BSA and why we should be talking to our legislators about that?
Yeah, so the BSA currently is $5,960, and it was increased last, for the current year, by $30, which is a very small increase. Aside from that, we're looking at about seven consecutive years without an increase to that, that number. That, along with the student enrollment are the two main numbers that drive our state funding. And so certainly, our operational costs have increased significantly over that seven-year period of time, and so it's just created a significant challenge for the district. So yes, highly important to advocate, you know, we advocated strongly last year, we'll continue to advocate this year, you know, at both the state level and the local level.
Ms. Marotti?
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. My first is a statement, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is super exciting, and I am very grateful to have this information so early. Can you tell me, why, why would we not get the one-time funding? So I noticed the two spreads, so just curious, what could possibly happen that would cause us not to get that one-time funding that we are supposed to get?
Yeah, so the purpose of those two numbers at the top isn't necessarily to imply we wouldn't get the one-time funding, although technically, it's not guaranteed. It's more for if we were to see a BSA increase, a BSA increase wouldn't come in on top of the one-time funding. It would come in at 5960. If the legislature chose to increase the BSA, it's very, it's almost certain, they would then ignore the one-time funding. So it would be back to zero. So if somebody, so an example is, somebody might say, well, our, if we're looking at row three, $19 million deficit, let's say, and if we get a $750 BSA increase, that's $18 million. Boom, we're right there, we're only, that would not be accurate. If the legislature increased the BSA by 750, it would be minus that 8.1 million one-time funding.
So if, sorry, may I follow up? So if I'm hearing you correctly, if we get a BSA increase, we don't get that one-time funding that we've been expecting?
Almost certain, correct.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
I'm grateful that you have pointed that out.
Yeah, like I mentioned earlier, the 8.1 is roughly around 350. So they would need to get the 8.1 plus the 18, it would be like a thousand, it'd be $1,100 BSA increase, so.
Like that one, that first option?
Yes, correct. So the reason why I put in row four was because if we're looking at a significant BSA increase, they would then stop looking at the one-time increases they've given and just go back to 5960 and start from there.
Interesting. I, thank you. I have another question, if I'm allowed?
Go right ahead, Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. I see that the projected enrollment is 12,408, but I heard that you said that we're trending at 12,5. My question, and I know it's not a lot, but it turns out to be significant when you do the math. So if we hold on to that 12,500, will we then use that as the enrollment projection instead of that 12,408? Or was that 12,500 a rounded number from the 12,408?
So, could you, wanna make sure I understand the question, you're asking, if we're looking at 12,5, why would we be projecting at 12,4?
I'm close. If we're looking at 12,5, if we're looking like 12,5, are we gonna adjust that 12,408 to 12,5?
Possibly, but we're certainly trending, we haven't seen upward trends over the long haul, we're seeing downward trends. And so the risk, and this is a common question, yeah, why, why can't you, I had many folks from our actuals last year to our, to our projected for this year, we projected down, we were around 12,650, our actuals last year. We projected 12,625. Okay? We were down much more than that. I had many people saying, well, we're gonna be up, we're gonna be up, we're gonna be up, you need to project up. The difficulty in that is if we project too high, then we staff for more students than what come in, then we're on, the district is on the hook for additional staff beyond what we receive funding for. So when we're looking at very small cash reserves on hand, that's how we would pay for those, that extra staff. And so the risk of over-projection is that we carry staff levels that are higher than what, what we need. So, but certainly, we're looking at long-term trends, and those trends aren't up, they're actually down.
Okay.
So.
So most likely staying with the 12,408?
Well, and that, that number could change. If we're, you know, that could go up a little bit. I wouldn't say a lot, but it could go up to 12,420, 12,425, but that'll, that'll shake out in the next month or so.
Okay. I have one more question, but I'm happy to let someone else go and wait another turn. Okay. There's a, you said there's a drop of 1.8 million in state funding? Can you just elaborate on what that's caused by?
Yeah, if we were applying the 12,408, that's what would come out of the funding formula.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. I know this is super early, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to just reach out to the listening public and let them know that this is why it's super important, the school board will be there, will be in June, you know, will be trying to advocate as hard as we can. I know our admin will be, I know FNS will be there, I know AASB will be there, but our public, our community needs to show up as well. It is very important to, it's also an election season, so it's very important to reach out to our legislatures, reach out to people who are running for office, and make sure that they understand where we are at and the definite need for an increase in our BSA.
With that, I'll just add that the early work that Mr. DeGraw is presenting to us will also be doing early. Borough Assembly work early also. We're just waiting to see what the election looks like, and then we'll be scheduling those meetings and maybe even some listening sessions from around the community. We wanted to make sure we were all of their mind. We need to do as early work as possible and collaborative work with the borough so that they will know what we're dealing with and funds that we can utilize, funds we can't, and designated funds, and why we operate the way we do. I believe we had, Mr. Dorn next? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just getting to the enrollment question. I know we're, main focus is on students, but one of the reasons why a decrease, are we also tracking that our borough population is declining, our state population is declining, we have an outflow of people from the state rather than getting a positive inflow? And so as that factors in, as well as the demographics that we're looking at for, so it's not a matter of just people leaving the, pulling their students out, it's impacted greatly by overall population decline and the childbearing demographics of later children, fewer children, and many of those moving out of state, which has little to do with the school, except it impacts the students. Is that part of that calculation?
Yeah, I would concur. Demographics play a big role in that long-term trend. Yes.
And, so the BSA that we're starting with, the revenue from the state that we're starting with is 5960. No additional, because that was one time, that was gone, that's gone after this year. So we start at 5960.
So I will state, and this is yet to be finalized, but it is very much in play for the district to be looking at that top-line number, the 19 to the 23 million dollars. That, again, has not been determined, but it's gonna be a decision, it's a big decision point, whether the district assumes, and this would step away from past practice. But the impacts will be catastrophic if we don't, and so that's gonna be a serious consideration. So that would be, to answer your specific question, Mr. Dorn, it would be 5960 plus the 8.1 is what we would be starting with if we make that decision.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, Ms. Dorn.
So I think you made a very important... So I think you made a very important, it's a big assumption that the legislature will do at least what the governor allowed. The governor will do no less than what he allowed this year, given his veto was one-half. But again, that would be one time. That would be a major assumption. But that we would be faced with the fact that there's 175 or 16.2 million for our district approximately, that we don't know. Is that, and we've?
Say that last part one more time.
So you're anticipating through the administration that the budget that we may develop might have this really unknown figure, whether it's 8.1, 16.2, since that's what the legislature passed, that we would build, building a budget from to be significantly different than anything we've done in the past?
Let me just restate and you respond if I'm responding correctly. We're considering the 5960 BSA plus 8.1 million one-time funding to include that in our revenue estimates for budgeting purposes for a proposed budget. That's what's in play. And that will be somewhat of stepping out onto the limb, so to speak. So is that, I'm not sure what your exact question is, Mr. Dorn.
Okay, I heard on the side here, "hope and a prayer", but knowing that we're going to perhaps go on a hope and a prayer.
And again.
Because then it puts pressure on our legislatures and our governor to come through.
Yeah, and so this, finance officers are conservative by nature for a reason. This would not be a conservative move. But the alternative to that is catastrophic for our school district. And so that's the decision point. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, that's fair enough. Got some more, but I can go back in the queue.
Well, how many more questions do you have, Ms. Dorn?
I've got about three, four.
Ms. Marotti, go ahead.
Thanks, I'm loving the questions. This is a really good discussion. I kind of want to go a little off track and request that, because this is so closely tied to the legislative action on our side that needs to happen, if we could start the legislative committee work in process for this next fiscal year, just as early as we're doing this budget work. It would, I think it would run really well hand-in-hand, and we have a lot of work to do. And so that's just a request from me, if anyone else wants to support that.
Ms. Matheson, Ms. Hardy, Mr. Dorn.
I just wanted to say that I do support that. I'd like to start working on the budget as soon as possible.
I also support that as well. And I had a question, but I'm not sure, because I wasn't at the conference that you all attended about A A S B, saying there was maybe a push to talk about the foundation formula. And I think it would be valuable to have Mr. DeGraw's input on that before we go down to the annual conference, when we'll vote on those priorities.
Mr. Dorn, then Ms. Burnett.
And when we talk about the local revenue being status quo, are we talking about the 50 million, 54 million? Or which are below what, what status quo?
Right, right now, status quo means the 54 million that we received.
Is what we're going to, even though they indicated that the 50, that the extra 4 million was very definitely an extra. So we're, again, similar to the 8.1. But, but it's 54 that we're going to use.
54 is the number, that's, yeah, I could have put 54 in the notes column there. But yeah, that's, that's the number that's in the system right now.
And Mr. Dorn, there's quite a bit of work between myself and the Borough Mayor that'll lead up to that number as well. And so we'll have, you know, more accurate figures as we get down the budget cycle, in terms of what our ask will be. And obviously, we'll have a considerable amount of conversation here leading in to that proposed budget as well. And so today, we really just wanted to get you an initial look at it. If I may, you know, the big elephant in the room that we haven't discussed is major cuts. And if the board is considering major cuts, things like school closure, contracting of services, shortened day of week, shortened school years, any of those things that would require a significant amount of research and community input, the sooner, you know, the board can let the administration know of your thoughts in those directions, we'll research those and bring that information back to the board. Because, you know, I don't build budgets on a hope and a prayer. I am hoping that, you know, the legislature comes through, but we do need to be prepared, if for some reason that they don't, that we're prepared for cuts going forward.
Thank you. Your, Ms. Burnett, and then Mr. Dorn.
I will actually let Ms. Marotti go first, so she can follow up with Ms. Hardy.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to follow up with what Ms. Hardy was saying and explain to Mr. DeGraw what she's talking about, in case you're not aware, that A A S B has suggested that the boards consider advocating for opening up the formula. And so that's what we would want to maybe have a work session on, to see what that looks like, so that we can advocate for it better.
Mr. Dorn.
I just wanted to throw my support behind getting going on our legislative committee as soon as possible. I know that everyone's aware that today's election day, and things could change, things could not either way. No matter what happens, anybody who is to join the board can jump in right away if we can get this going and we can at least establish some priorities and such, so that we may get this underway, the sooner the better.
Mr. Dorn.
I appreciate the, the chair's patience with me.
Oh, the chair is just talking about the policy work we have in front of us before budget work, but go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Well, a couple of things that I do want to say is, one, I really appreciate having seen this on the agenda this early. So to the, to President Sanderson, to Superintendent Minor, Mr. DeGraw and the team. Because I think what it really does say is, we really start with 5960. We don't have anything else. We can, we need to advocate, and I think you're bringing it forward to, so our community knows how dire this is when we say we are in a world of hurt if we don't get that, either, that one time we got this year, either as a one-time, another one-time, or into the BSA. And it needs to be in the BSA to really plan. So thank you very, very much for bringing this forward. And in terms of getting an early start, I was going to save this for my policy comment at the, or committee comment at the end, but I think it's more appropriate here. The Budget Committee meets next Wednesday. So we are starting right away on this and working with the administration and getting feedback from our stakeholders on that committee. We do have a couple of community vacancies there, and so I'll talk about that later. But, but getting on this becomes really important. So just a couple of quick questions is one, because I don't expect the answer tonight. But January, the legislature comes back into session, and there has been a conversation regarding possibly an override of the governor's veto of $87.1 million in one-time funding for schools, or a supplemental request. And I'll put the question out, because the question is, if that came through in January or early February, how would we use that? Because it would come through in this year. How might we use that? What's the thinking that we would need to, I don't expect an answer tonight. What's the thinking that could preface for that? And maybe give our legislators, our Interior delegation and others, a talking points, why this is important? And that we could use that now, not just say, oh, well, we're halfway through the year. We don't need it.
Ms. Marotti.
Sorry, he said he's going to address it later. It was just about the Budget Committee vacancies. Thank you, though.
Anything else?
So I was, that was a question to the administration.
Yes, I'm getting to that. Ms. Dr. Marotti, would you have a response?
Yeah, I think you're correct in stating that I don't want to respond to that this evening and give specific details on what we would come forward with. But we would absolutely be in favor of additional funding right now. You know, we, we've made several cuts over the last seven to 10 years. And it would be great to get back to a place where we're talking about investments in education. And so I think we would start with some of those items that have been cut in the past that we could potentially add right back in to this year's budget.
Thank you. If I might.
Is this your funding?
Pretty close.
Mr. Dorn.
And this is through the, through the chair and consideration of perhaps doing a resolution. Again, I think some preparation work relative to what we're talking about tonight, the report from administration, et cetera. But a resolution that might be important in putting forth to the legislators and the governor and our Borough Assembly to really outline the importance of having the funding. Because right now, we know that we cannot count on it from the state or the borough. There are those who want to cut, have taken actions to cut. And so what is it that, where we can make, maybe have a resolution that will help us advocate, that goes along with the Legislative Committee work, et cetera? But just like to put that out there.
All right. Is that it, Mr. Dorn?
No.
Thank you for now, really appreciate that. That brings us to, thank you, Mr. DeGraw, for sharing that information with us. Our board comments, and I'd like to start with Colonel Cole.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Colonel Alvarado.
No comments, great seeing all of you.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith.
The Policy Committee is meeting on October 19. That's it.
Ms. Matheson.
Thank you. The Diversity Committee is meeting tomorrow here at 5:30. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If you feel unsafe, please call 1-800-799-7233. Football is wrapping up, and basketball and wrestling will start soon. Please go out and support our students. Keep on the lookout for concerts and plays, they're going to be starting soon. And we'll keep you updated. If not, please call the schools, they'll let you know. And being that October is Attendance Awareness Month, just a little bit of stats for the nerds. 90% of our elementary, our elementary school students, if 90% or greater in attendance, have shown a higher proficiency in reading. So keep that in mind and make sure that your students are getting to school on time and that they're there more than 90% of the time. And that's it. I hope to see you guys at Diversity Committee tomorrow.
Ms. Hardy.
I guess very briefly, I just wanted to express my condolences to the service members that we lost this week. That hit me pretty hard. I was actually standing on a street corner when I watched the helicopter land. And my husband was a medevac pilot, so I know what that means. Other than that, I think that's good.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. So I do have several things. One, I'll come back to the Budget Committee. As I mentioned, it will be meeting next week, Wednesday, October 11th, at 5:30. We do have some vacancies on the, for community members. So if you're interested, come join. And I think tonight's report underscores the importance of the Budget Committee as all our committees. It's our chance to hear from stakeholders. And on the budget, we especially want a robust conversation so that we can get the perspectives, reactions, concerns from those members. That will then help advise the administration and the board as we go ahead in the whole budget process and putting it together. As Dr. Minor had mentioned, we need to look at what we would add in if we have those opportunities. You know, how we innovate, how we create, how we return some things that we have lost, that we want to get back, as well as what we need to do if we do not get the investment and to have that conversation. So that's the big thing, next Wednesday, Budget Committee, 5:30. Wanted to highlight, when I was going through the personal information report for today's meeting, retirements are always something to note. I, you know, many of these people have been around a long time. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Larry Isgrig with the Facilities Maintenance Department. He's a maintenance mechanic, and he'll be retiring at the end of this year after 33 years in our district. And so I remember him coming to Denali and taking care of us at different times. And so I thought, over 30 years of service with our district, we don't have too many who, who reach that mark. And so I wanted to recognize him. October is National Principals Month. And I'd love to give a shout-out to our principals. They do a tremendous job in working with their teams at their schools and their communities. And really want to express appreciation for all the myriad things they do. Big and small. Whether they're sometimes helping to shovel snow, whether they're helping to get a kid home at the end of a day, whether they're helping a teacher to meet the needs of their students in their classroom. There are just so many different things that they do. Sometimes it's be a sounding board for parents. And it's been quite some time since we've had a resolution recognizing Principals Month. And I would respectfully, through the chair, suggest that maybe we consider one for, in time for next meeting. So now that I'm giving the chair lots of work to do, no. I do want to also just say that I absolutely was thrilled with an opportunity to visit North Star College, talk with the staff there. We had a very robust conversation. They were pushing me on my thinking. I was learning new things and just getting a feel for the, what they have taken on this year. That was an incredible jump from 40 to 175 students in one year. And most of the staff didn't come on until middle of the summer. So they've just done a tremendous job meeting the needs of our students in that regard. And to have been part of Hutch's presentation this morning, that, that is a wonderful honor, not only for the, the teacher, but also for the school and the students and staff there. And last, I just want to say, thank you to our community for coming out to vote over the last couple of weeks. You have approximately 16 minutes left before the polls close. So if you're nearby and need to make a quick dash, but really appreciate that participation in our community and taking a voice. So thanks much.
Mr. Lopez.
I just want to, again, promote, promote school board members and administration to come in and support the Alaska Association of Super Government Conference that's happening next weekend, the 13th to 15th, at West Valley High School, and how important it is to see students engaging and having a voice on government issues. And that's my report.
Ms. Marotti.
Thanks, I want to say, I thank you to our admin for the great reports and info, as always. Also, I support Mr. Dorn's request for a resolution from the board in regards to funding, and I'm happy to help with that if needed. I want to say thank you to the candidates who ran Clean and Professional Races. And thank you to the community that came out to support them and voted this year. If you haven't voted, you now have 12 minutes left to vote. Voting is one of the most important civic duties we can do. And I'm excited to see potentially an increase in our voter turnout this year. Colonel Cole and our military community and families. My heart goes out to the family members and friends of the service members who gave their life serving our country. members and friends of the service members who gave their life serving our country. Someone once said to me that our flag does not fly because the wind moves it, it flies with the last breath of each shoulder who died protecting it, and we honor them and will keep their memory alive.
Ms. Burnett.
That was beautiful, Ms. Maratti. I would first like to start with Durham, they are looking for additional drivers. I know that, that's a question that came from the board today. There is a hiring event coming up on the 14th, that's a Saturday, it's going 10 to 4, so if you are looking for a job, you know somebody who's looking for a job, they're looking for drivers and monitors, go check out the event, go see the amazing facilities, all the great people there. I had an opportunity to be at the last one, and I'll be at this one as well, and it's just a really cool place, really cool people. Go see it, go talk to them, get yourself a job, help us out with our routes. Also, I would like to, through the Chair, request that our Legislative Committee be a committee of the whole. We have a few members on it right now, but I think that all of us add something, and all of us have an advocacy part for legislative ability, and I think that we should be a committee of the whole, and we should all put as much effort as we can, especially with the deficits that we are facing this year. North Star College, thank you so much for allowing President Sanderson and I to visit. It was really great to see your facilities, and to see how you guys are utilizing U A F, and just so cool for our students and that experience that they're getting there, it was absolutely amazing. This weekend is playoff football for our high schools. North Pole versus West Valley is happening on Friday, that's going to be a heck of a game, 7:00 PM kickoff, and then on Saturday, Lathrup, if you've not had a chance to see Lathrup, they are just killing it out there, and they are taking on Wasilla on Saturday at 2:00 PM, and the losers, of course, go home, and the winners will go on to the semifinals, the, the, the...
Second place.
Second place, there you go, sorry. But congratulations to Mr. Rotsloff, that was a really cool ceremony to be able to be a part of this morning. Thank you, Dr. Minor, for inviting the board, that was really cool. Sorry, guys, I'm not politically correct sometimes. Curriculum Committee is meeting this Thursday, if you'd like to come and be part of that, we will be right here in our boardroom at 5:30. And a big reminder out there that you saw the white stuff, it's now here, so please slow down out there, give yourself some extra space and time. Our school buses, especially around them, watch for our kids. You know, there was a tragedy over there on Trainer Gate Road, and we just would like to not see that happen again, so please, especially now that the weather is changing and winter is coming, please watch for our students, please watch for our buses. Nothing is more important than a life, so please just be careful out there. And last, but not least, a big good luck to all the candidates out there who ran, it's very hard, it's not easy at all, so my hat's off to all of you. I know it's been a heck of a race season, so good luck, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Ms. Maratti, did you have a, a dinner?
I just wanted to support Ms. Burnett's request to make the Legislative Committee a committee of the whole. I believe other boards do that, and I think it's pretty successful. Thanks.
I would just like for my closing comments to also, you know, give my support and, and condolences to the family who've lost loved ones. It's just been shy two months with the loss of my grandson, so they serve in our community, and we want to keep them safe, we want to keep them thriving. I'm asking, because next month, November, at the A A S B Conference, we will be, again, celebrating the June Nelson Memorial Scholarship, so I'm taking this opportunity to start early, so if there's beaters, or awesome quilts out there, some kind of artwork, I would love to have that, and be able to take it, to have it be a part of our fundraising. Last year, in a matter of hours, I think we raised like $28,000 in a matter of hours. Have to tell you that peach treats that I share with the board, I do not take and eat them all myself, I share them. Hit box of chocolates went for 350 bucks. It's berries from all over Cardova, and they're truffles, and they are so yummy. So, if there's art piece or crafted piece that you would like to donate for this, they award $1,500 scholarships to students across our state, and some of our students in this district have been recipients of those scholarships. They award at least two scholarships for continuing, students who are continuing their college studies, and we go back and forth every year about making sure that at least two of the scholarships go for students who were doing trades, because that's really important, and then the remaining are distributed throughout Alaska, and that is from rural to urban, and it is a pretty awesome legacy that they have supported on behalf of Ms. June Nelson. That is all my comments at this point. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Board, for your help, work, your help.